Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Given the recent dramatic rise in COVID case rates within the community and due to the size of the council chambers and numbers of attendees, masks will be required for all attendees attending the meeting, in person, vaccinated or not. Agenda packets are available at the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. And then please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And also, I would ask one more thing. If anybody has cell phones on, if you could please turn them to silent so they won't interrupt during the meeting, I'd appreciate that. And with that, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano. We don't have Serrano yet. Barajas.
Present.
And Martinez.
Present. Councilmember Serrano, are you on the line?
Okay, there are six members present right now.
Thank you. If he comes in, we'll make a note of that.
Yes.
With that, may we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll go to the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by the roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. The first item on the Consent Agenda is the approval of meeting minutes, to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council meeting held on September 20th, 2021, and the workshop held on September 27th, 2021. Next is the Bills and Communications, to approve claims in a total amount of $5,922,639.50. And next on the Consent Agenda would be an ordinance amending the Pasco Public Facilities District Charter related to ballot issue process, and that is to adopt ordinance number 4552, amending the charter of the Pasco Public Facilities District, and publishing it as a restated charter and further authorized publication by summary only. Next is a resolution naming a new park in Chapel Hill neighborhood. That's to approve resolution number 4097, approving the name Palomino Park for the new city park located in Chapel Hill neighborhood. Item E of the Consent Agenda is a resolution to accept work for the Giza Stadium batting cages, and that's to approve resolution number 4098, accepting the work performed by All-Star Construction Group for the Giza Stadium batting cages. Item F is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, recommendations for 2022, and this is to approve the allocations of the 2022 lodging tax received as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So those are the items on the Consent Agenda. Does council or anybody in the public have any issues or comments with any one of these items on the Consent Agenda? If not, then Mayor Protemba would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda as read.
There's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read. Do I hear it second?
Ms. Alvarado, I'll second.
Second it by Councilmember Alvarado, please. So can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
And I'll try Serrano one more time. Serrano?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here and yes.
So he's attended and he voted yes. So all that is passed unanimously.
My apologies for earlier.
It's okay. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. All right, next we'll move right along to the Proclamations and Acknowledgement. And City Manager Dave Zabel, do you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to note to council that we received from our Ninth District Legislative Delegation, Senator Schessler, Representative Schmick and Dye, a lot of appreciation to Mayor Martinez for his service as a councilman and mayor of Pasco. So congratulations, Mayor, on the letter.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. It was a very nice gesture from our legislators, so thank you for that. Next, we'll move right along to...
Don't you want to say anymore about that, Mayor? I mean, that's phenomenal. We appreciate what you're doing, and they do too, so please take some extra credit that you're awesome.
Maybe I'll just leave it at that. I do appreciate the gesture from the legislative districts. I've learned a lot from them over the years, and they've been very supportive. And, you know, I just do what I try to do as best I can, and appreciate them writing this letter. It really did mean something to me, anyway, so thank you so much. So next, we'll move along to Item Six. It's Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. So this item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of question with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor, and those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit in writing information for the consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So tonight, I know we have a good attendance here for a certain subject that's now on the agenda item, but other than that, I would like to... I know there's at least two gentlemen who have requested to give comments. Mr. John Rose, would you like to come up and share? Would you have to share with us tonight?
Do I need to wear my mask up here?
Yes, you have to wear your mask.
Okay. I apologize if indeed I sound mumbled. Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity for an opinion. The saying, "A house divided against itself shall not stand," I think is a very adequate and appropriate truism at this time. Our state, our community, is divided. And what is it that divides them? I would offer fear as the main reason. Fear of many things, but mostly COVID-19 and related sequelae, namely unknown or perceived risk of disease and death to themselves and to their loved ones. An unknown or confused reason for continuing lockdowns, masks, vaccine mandates, and that may affect their lives personally or their livelihoods, or even their families. Our normally trusted institutions at the local and national levels are not providing answers to the skeptic public with large double-blind studies, but instead provide cover for or even permission for the censoring of any discussion and opposing views to the CDC or NIH public COVID-19 recommended narrative. Even our president has said he's kind of fed up with us, losing patience with us, non-complying citizens. As evidence of this fear, I would refer to Franklin County Sheriff J.D. Raymond's recent 23rd of September letter, basically answering some of his constituents and our members of our community about why he wasn't arresting those who his citizens wanted to arrest for not wearing masks. He did a great job of explaining the law and ways to deal with that. But certainly, it points out that we've got some problems of our own selves. I'm suggesting the elected leaders of Franklin and Benton Counties, towns, and cities gather together one or more peer review committees of retired, non-financial affiliated members of our community. This committee could be drawn from the brain trust of our unique concentration of scientists, researchers, statisticians, and doctors and nurses who live here and want to help our community. By volunteering their time and effort to finding, reviewing, and clarifying of worldwide information, they would help us open up information that is censored and/or deplatformed opposing views, and can summarize and clarify critical information pertaining to the treatment, mitigation, and management of COVID-19. I think this would definitely and drastically reduce the fear and distress of our friends and neighbors and unite us. The division would decrease because we would have pertinent and critical information that would be and could be kindly persuasive and persuasive, instead of frightening or scaring our citizenship into a particular behavior.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask you to wrap it. Oh, is that it? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, next. I really do appreciate that, Mr. Rose. Next, we have Eric Larson. Is he here tonight? Good evening, Mr. Larson.
Hello, Pasco City Councils. Thank you, Mayor Martinez, for hearing us out. My name is Eric Larson, and I represent Clearmind Cannabis. We currently hold a legal recreational license for the city. Of course, there's currently a city ban on that. We respect that. We have heard a little bit about the conversation being moved forward a little bit, maybe in the way of some sort of a survey of the community. And I would like to offer my services if there's a community seat at the table or some sort of community input, I'd like to offer my services to assist in the language that might be asked of them, so it's a clear, fair question, a question that, you know, is really relatively easy to answer, unlike other ones I've seen in other surveys and votes in other communities, including my own Yakima County, where they asked kind of a double negative question and obviously got the answer they desired, I guess. I'd also like to just kind of push forward the idea that we recently submitted some more information to Mr. Zabel about, you know, the updated information that we had come to present here a year ago. We still have seen no significant cannabis shops being unnecessarily burglarized just because they sell cannabis. We have not seen a spike in youth chemical dependency, some of the biggest concerns of this community, and they're valid ones. But I also feel like the data shows different, and I think it's time for a new discussion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager Dave Zabel, just to remind you, please, we're talking about the surveys that are going to go out to the public. Will there be another review of those questions, or is there any format where...
The council did select a question to go out with the National Community Survey that will be going out in November and early part of December. We should get those results back towards the end of the year and beginning of next year, compile those, and have those to council typically by late January or early February.
Yeah, so we approved those already.
So, yeah. Yeah. But it is asking the public sentiment on retail sale.
Yeah, so you're right. We have had discussions on it, and we already got the questions going out to the public, but when we get the results, we are obviously going to share them with the community.
Can I know what the question is?
Well, tell you what, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we utilize a professional survey service, and happy to share with you that once it's done. The council did look at some draft ones, that there's probably likely going to be some tweaking to that to make sure there aren't any biases in it and so forth. These are folks that do this professionally, so...
Can I ask what company you guys used?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't remember right off the top of my head.
Okay, I'll find that out, maybe.
Just send me a quick email, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the only two that I see that are not related to the item that's going to be on the agenda. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Mr. Cortinas.
Mayor Martinez and city council members, Dave Cortinas, President for the Latin Business Association, offices at Port Levin West Clark in Pasco. The City of Pasco has been doing business for many, many years in ways that many of us disagree. We believe that some of the ordinances are old, they're not functioning anymore, and we think that the way we do business here has handcuffed the city council members. The city council members follow policies and rules, the way they run their agendas is the way the administration has put the city council in a way that they have to follow their rules and their policies. In Robert's Rules of Order, it tells us how we're supposed to run business. In 2005, the Washington Hispanic Chamber of Commerce challenged the District of Columbus of the way they did business, and they made change. In 2007, in which I took part of that, they asked me to come in and help them with the way they do policy changes, and I was glad to be part of that. In 2007, Atlanta were challenged the way they did business, and I was called in as a national bylaws, Robert's Rules of Order specialist, and we made corrections in Atlanta the way they do business. Here in Pasco, I see the very same thing, and I think a lot of your constituents see the same thing. They see that the City of Pasco has been running business not as usual, and then they say you're using Robert's Rules of Order. You're using parts of the Robert's Rules of Order, but you're not really using all of the Robert's. Either we use Robert's Rules of Order or we don't. Now, the attorneys can tell you that, you know, don't step out of bounds, don't get out of your regular way of doing business, and they put a scare on our council members. Well, we can't. We can't do business that way. And then lots of times, the city council, someone comes and brings problems to the city council, and the council passes the buck. And months later, we're still waiting for the checks. We have business owners tonight that'll probably talk and say, hey, where's the checks? I think there was a Burger King commercial that said, where's the beef? I think these people are saying, where's the checks? Where's the changes? Where are we going to make the changes? And when can we make those changes? Well, I want to be able tonight to tell you, the city council members, that you can make change, because it is the city community who has given you that authority, not the administration, not the city attorney. They didn't give Mayor Martinez and his council members the authority to act in the name of the community. The community voted you in.
I understand.
And so the community... I know you're going to cut me off, and that's understandable.
We give three minutes, Mr. Cortinas.
No, that's fine. No, no, I understand. That's fine. I'll do respect, Mayor. I respect you. And so, and I'm going to need more time, okay? And I'm sure they're going to be prepared to do that.
Mr. Cortinas, please.
So I say, Mr. Mayor, that there is going to be some change tonight. We, as the downtown business owners, have united in a united front to come to you to make change starting tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Morales.
Good evening. My name is Leonardo Morales, and I thank you guys for being here, and I would like to leave my three minutes to Mr. Cortinas right here.
No, no, that's not going to happen.
Yes, you can do that.
No, that's not going to happen.
Why not?
Because it's not allowed. We're going to give you three minutes to have your decision.
So you really want it, so in what base? I cannot give my minutes to him?
Because I have to run this meeting in an orderly manner.
So how do you do it?
We need to get through this meeting, and we're giving you three minutes, Mr. Morales.
Can you explain to me legally why you're not allowing me to do it?
Mr. Morales, you got three minutes, or else...
So can you explain to me why I'm not allowed to do it?
Because I'm trying to run this meeting in an orderly fashion and giving everybody their three minutes.
So what's the difference listening to me to him?
Because we already... I've heard what he said. We understand. We heard what he said.
You know, I've been in this council, this is not the first time you guys do this to us, especially to me.
Mr. Morales, you got three minutes.
I'm going to use my three minutes. So, hey, now you're going to listen to me for three minutes, right?
Yes, sir.
Did I get it or not? You can put me in the clock. When we were discussing the new Holy Stender, you guys came out and said, nobody can talk. If nobody comes up with something new, I wouldn't want to listen to you. You guys are elect officials. I'm talking to you, the city council, not to the city employees. They don't work for me. You choose to be, to run for city council. You choose, and let me remind you something, though, now that you want to listen to me. I remind you that when you run for city council, you didn't do it for the money. You did not do it for the money, because you get paid nothing. You did it to make change. You did it to make a difference. I'm talking to all seven of you guys, and not, I mean, you guys are elect officials. So when you guys run for this position, I guarantee you that you will run to make a difference. You're not making any difference, and it seems to me that the City of Pasco is run by the employees, not by you guys, because I've been coming to this thing for two years, two years, and you know what I get from the city employees? Oh, Mr. Morales, this is a process, it takes time. You've got to be patient. This takes time. You've got to be patient. I remember I met you in one of those meetings two years ago, and you were with your wife, and I said, hey, congratulations, you're the new mayor. And I met Sarah, and then we went to Rock 68. Tell me, why are you guys... Forget the employees. They do not work for me. You guys run to be city councils. You guys, because you guys wanted to. You want to be a council. Okay, now do what you're here for. You came here to make a difference. I've been coming here to this council for two years. What do you guys tell me? Oh, we're going to talk about it. What were you talking about? I went to the city employees, what the city employee says? Oh, this is going to take time. This is a long process. How long is it? These rules have been in the book for 40 years. How many other years? Last time I came, he said 10 months. Oh, they are planning things, it's going to take 10 months. Why is the city council not... This is what I want to know, and I'm going to give my three minutes, so, man. Can you guys, seven of you guys, be on the record to say if you are for changing downtown Pasco or you are not? Simple as that. All I want to know is, so when you guys run, we can vote against. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity. Stephen Baumann here. Could I have clarification perhaps from legal counsel? Does the Pasco City Council run on Robert's Rules? Or do we have a different set?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, go ahead.
No, we run on Robert's Rules of Order.
Partially or completely?
No, completely. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Could you perhaps give us a...
No, I'm not going to give you a recitation right now of Robert's Rules of Order or get into a debate.
Certainly, so on Robert's Rules of Order, if I cede my time to another person, I can do that, correct?
No, the city council, by their agenda, says...
So we go partially on Robert's Rules of Order, because that is Robert's Rules of Order.
We amend portions of it.
Okay, is there a way that I can get a copy of what we've amended?
It's written visitor comments. It says right here on the agenda.
I'm sorry, this is public comment period. Is there a place that you guys have written down what this partial Robert Rules of Order are?
No, we use Robert's Rules of Order as a basis, and then upon that, we amend, we go through certain procedures, and we use certain council does certain procedures in their meeting where they can amend those, and that's what they've chosen to do.
So it's amended for always or just as we wish as we go along?
Through the agenda.
Okay, that doesn't make any sense, because I just read through Robert Rules of Order multiple times today so that I had an understanding, and so is my understanding, unless I can be told otherwise, that we use a partial portion of Robert's Rules of Order. So, thank you. Very disappointed.
Anybody else would like to speak on behalf of something that's not on the agenda items?
Good evening, City of Pasco. This is Mary from Amora, Mexico, restaurant here in Pasco. I am here to ask the City of Pasco to please help me with fire sprinkler systems for my building. I do want to thank City of Pasco for helping me out with the Franklin PUD. That really helped me out a lot. Thank you, guys, all. But urgently, since I haven't been able to do any even karaoke in my business, my business came down about a little more than 50% due to now I close at 10:00 PM instead of 2:00 AM, so that makes a huge difference. Usually by 9 o'clock, I have no customers already. So I'm here to see if you guys can help me out with the fire sprinkler system. I'm here to stay. I want to be able to stay open for long. By the way, my business is not for sale. It was last year when all the coronavirus stuff was going on. The sign was not taken off of there just because the lady never came in, but now it's gone, so it's not for sale. I want to be able to stay for long, but now that a lot of these migrant workers leave about October, I'm like, what am I going to do for November, December, January? If I don't have, I mean, if I don't have customers, I might have to close, and I don't want to do that. I believe some of you guys have been down there, and I believe I have a nice restaurant for downtown. I have plenty of parking space, and the area is not a small place. It's about 3,500 square feet that I have, so I urgently do believe I need the help with the fire sprinkler systems. And as far as the ARPA, I haven't even gotten a check from that either, so just wanted to comment that, and I wanted to thank the City of Pasco for all their effort that they've done in the past in helping us out.
Thank you, Maria. I've been to your restaurant and enjoyed it, and we are working, just, you know, I mean, there is work and efforts being as we speak to try to get some help there for those things. We're working on it. And I say "we," the staff is working on it, and they're doing what they can to move as fast as they can with all the things we got going on. Thank you. Anybody else?
Buenas noches. Yo no hablo ingles. Hablo español. Soy mexicana, y tengo mi negocio que se llama Dream Fashion. Tengo diez años ubicada aquí en el Downtown de Pasco, y vengo a decirles el porqué nos están haciendo creer que nos van a apoyar y que nos van a ayudar. Supuestamente dijeron que nos iban a ayudar con un dinero, que nos iban a mandar cheques. Hasta ahorita no hemos recibido ninguna ayuda.
Okay, the committee... Well, I'm not even sure that I can actually legally translate, because I'm not a translator, but for the council who don't know how to speak Spanish, this is a... Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Cortinas, if you want to go ahead and translate for us, we'll allow that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Veronica is a downtown business owner. She's questioning about the checks that were promised. She doesn't believe she's going to be helped, and she's been waiting for a check from ARPA Funds, and she would appreciate to know when the checks are going to come, because they need help.
No, nada más yo. Somos muchos los negocios que estamos necesitando ahorita el apoyo porque no tenemos ventas. No tenemos trabajo. Está todo parado.
Not just me, but there's a whole bunch of us downtown that need help. We need help to be able to purchase the things that we need, and so there's a bunch of us that are waiting on the help.
Y queremos saber si nos van a ayudar o no, o nada más nos están prometiendo las cosas como todo el tiempo lo hacen y no están cumpliendo.
And we want to know if you're going to help, because we haven't seen no help, and you guys keep promising us, and we still don't see no help.
La otra cosa que también quiero decir cuando fuimos a meter la aplicación ahí al sol, este, nos cuestionaron de todo. Y no se me hizo correcto ni se me hizo justo las cosas que nos estaban cuestionando.
When I went down and applied with my application with a slot, they asked a whole bunch of questions, and that weren't part of the application, and they kept asking all these questions that I thought were uncalled for, and I don't see a reason why they were asking all these questions.
Y aparte de eso, nos estaban pidiendo documentos del 2021, las tasas todavía ni siquiera las hacemos.
And they were even asking us for our tax returns from 2021, and we hadn't even done taxes for 2021.
Y nos estaban haciendo unas preguntas que para qué íbamos a necesitar el dinero, que en qué lo íbamos a gastar. Obviamente, no nos vamos a ir a Las Vegas ni nos vamos... eh, que en qué lo íbamos a gastar. Obviamente no nos vamos a ir a Las Vegas ni nos vamos a ir a los casinos, a gastarnos el dinero. Lo necesitamos para pagar la renta y los bilis.
And we, where they were asking questions like, "What are you gonna use the money for?" and, and "How you're gonna spend the money?" and, "We're not gonna use the money to go to Las Vegas or, uh, do other things with it. We need the money to pay the rent."
Okay.
So, quiero saber si nos van a apoyar o no, porque no, nada más soy yo. Somos muchos los negocios que estamos así. Ahorita estamos sufriendo mucho.
So, I'm asking to see if you are gonna help us, and if you are gonna send the checks, because I'm not the only one. There's a whole bunch of us that need your help.
Mr. Go ahead, city manager, Dave Zabel.
Mayor, I was gonna, uh, ask Director Sigdel under Miscellaneous tonight to give council an update, but I just was communicating with her. She is prepared to do that now if, if council desires.
She's prepared to do that now?
Yes.
Would you like to hear that right now?
Let's wait to hear what everybody else has to say, and then let her do her, her thing when she needs to. That's okay.
Okay, so there's more, is there somebody else that wants to speak on this behalf?
Alguien más que quiere hablar acerca de este tema?
Buenas noches, ¿cómo estás?
Hola, buenas noches, señor Martínez. Yo soy el director de economía de la LBA de Downtown de Pasco. Nada más tenemos una pregunta que últimamente nos la estamos haciendo todos. Este, al parecer, personas tienen la ayuda que ya necesitamos todos los negocios, pero no la sueltan.
Hello, I'm Francisco. Hello, Mr. Mr. Mayor. My name is Francisco. I'm the Economic Development Board member of the LBA. And I'm, I'm, we, we need some assistance.
Okay. Uh, al parecer, uh, pusieron las aplicaciones, dijeron que se podían hacer en línea. Hicieron la, las aplicaciones en línea y no les aceptaron. Cada quien ha tenido que ir a llevar los documentos, personalmente, que le están pidiendo después, pero le están haciendo muchos cuestionamientos, a más que nada, a todos los miembros de la LBA. No, no entiendo la razón.
Uh, they told us that one time we could, uh, uh, apply for the fund, ARPA funds, uh, online. And so, some of us did that, and then they didn't accept them. Then they made us go down and, and fill out applications in person, and they were asking a whole bunch of questions. Uh, especially, we're concerned because they were asking only the members of the LBA for, uh, documents.
Yo represento a todos los negocios y, y creo que, al parecer, se dijo que el, el lunes pasado habían salido los cheques. Yo quiero saber a dónde se fueron los cheques, porque los cheques no llegaron a nadie, nadie, nadie ha recibido uno.
I represent a whole bunch of the businesses downtown, and, and, uh, we've been waiting for the ARPA funds or the checks, and they said they sent the checks out last Monday, and we're still waiting for the checks.
Okay. Y esta, okay, vamos a presentar, hacer una presentación ahorita que termine usted.
That's it. Gracias. Thank you very much.
¿Hay alguien más que quería hablar de este tema?
¿En español?
Sí, ¿quieres hablar en inglés?
No, en español está bien. Ah, pues, lo mismo que, pues necesitamos la ayuda, que no hemos recibido tampoco nada, y que, pues necesitamos ayuda porque el trabajo ha bajado demasiado. Ya ahorita no podemos tener gente, por lo mismo, porque la gente tiene miedo, y los pagos siguen llegando, y sí necesitamos una ayuda, un apoyo de ustedes ahorita, es cuando más necesitamos.
Just the same thing. I just wanna say that there's a lot of bills keep piling up and coming in, and we still have to pay them, and we need help. Uh, we really need help right now. We can't wait much longer, and we need to, you know, find out when, when this is gonna happen, if you are gonna help us.
Okay. But, but, okay.
Igualmente, voy a hacer una presentación ahorita para explicar un poquito más de eso.
Okay, ma.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cortinas, for that. Um, Director, uh, Richard, are you on the line?
Uh, I'm online, uh, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, and, um, overall, uh, I would like to, um, reiterate that there is, uh, a little bit more than two point seven million dollars that has been allocated by the City of Pasco for business assistance via the ARPA funds. Um, so that, that is a funding that is available out there. Uh, as usual, and I know I sound like a broken record, but with grant, federal grants, uh, and grant funding, uh, it is not an easy process. Uh, so, uh, we recognize, uh, the questions might feel more intrusive, uh, than maybe your other, uh, interactions with local government. And that is purely because we do have to have a basis for how we're allocating funds, so we can prove that it was fair and that it was needed, uh, which is not a question, but we have to have a basis, uh, so we can show to the federal government that the funds that were distributed to the city were utilized in a manner of the grant requirements. So, that is what, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, is doing at this point. Uh, we do have a weekly meeting with them and almost a daily email conversation. Um, and they're, they're doing their very best to help, uh, all of the business owners, uh, in our community. Uh, at this time, uh, the chamber has written out checks for, uh, a little bit more than three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, and there will be, uh, for the rest of the funding, um, there's about seven hundred thousand that is considered to be pending. Um, these are situations where there not all of the documentation was available. One of the issues that, um, the chamber has found is, um, it's, it's just the lack of, um, some of the resources that, um, we have at home. Uh, at work, we might have scanners, and we might have documents that we can easily scan, and it is, uh, legible. Uh, but with phone and pictures, uh, some of those items were not working. So, I, I definitely appreciate the businesses having, uh, to make the trek, uh, maybe to, uh, to go to the chamber and, uh, provide some of the documentation that is not ideal. So, overall, we have, uh, we have about one point one million dollars that is, um, pretty much ready to go out, and, um, it just needs to be reviewed with, with the missing documentation that has been provided in the last ten days after, uh, the committee first met. Uh, there are still about, uh, seventy-one applications that are considered to be incomplete. Um, and, uh, of that, about ten are, uh, waiting for, uh, tax extensions. These are businesses that have filed for tax extension for the twenty twenty taxes. Um, and the reason that we need that is because we need to find the revenue loss between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and so that is the reason that we ask for that document. Um, so, overall, there's still, uh, quite a bit of businesses with incomplete applications that the chamber has reached out to and, um, and tried to assist. Uh, there might be some situations where, um, some of those documents might not be available, so we're working with the businesses on a one-on-one basis. Um, on, on the same theme, uh, we have also allocated a little bit more than a million dollars in utility assistance, and that is for the electric service, um, the solid waste, which would be the garbage, uh, as well as water sewer services at this time. That is the, my report.
Thank you, Director Richa. Uh, did I hear you say that there's been about three hundred and some thousand dollars that has already been mailed out? Did I, is that what you said?
That is correct. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that has been mailed out. Uh, it is a certified mail, um, so, um, it, it should have reached its recipients at this point.
And for, how, how can somebody be assured that their application is being processed? Do they contact the Chamber of Commerce, or do they contact?
Yes.
City, city council?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, very likely. I, I would be surprised if, uh, our business owners have not heard from, uh, the chamber. Uh, at this point, I would not be surprised at, uh, if somebody complained that they were hearing too much from them. Uh, but, um, essentially, chamber is reaching out to get, uh, additional information that might be missing, or there might be clarifications that are, that are needed, so that they can present it to the committee, so the committee can make the, make the decisions that they need to make in terms of, uh, the application needing the eligibility of the grant program.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I ask Director Sigdel one question, please?
Absolutely. Go ahead, can I ask a member, Donny?
Thank you. Um, Director Sigdel, um, have any applications at this point been rejected? Or are they all either incomplete or, um, was it pending? I think there's a term used for accepted in the text of the mail. Is those, uh, is there any in the rejected bin?
Uh, we have not rejected any applications yet. Uh, and the reason for that is because we still have funding left. So, uh, for, from our perspective, as long as there's funding, um, there is, um, money to give out as per council's direction. And so, we're trying to help the businesses to get the right documentation, so that they can meet the, meet the requirements of the program.
Great, I appreciate that, but we are not accepting new applications at this point. Just simply, we are processing the existing applications that have been submitted, um, be they complete or incomplete at this point.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, make a, a, a comment to the audience in Spanish, uh, explaining that, um, uh, exa, kind of summarizing what, uh, Director Richa said. Para los que no entienden inglés, este, no sé si entendieron todo lo que dijo la, la directora. A lo mejor, uh, si están en el LBA, pueden, al, el mano, al, señor Cortinas, a lo mejor les puede ayudar. Están procesando todo esto. Hay como trescientos mil dólares que ya, ya se, se fue por correo. Certified mail. Este, y le recomiendo que se, se comunica con el Chamber of Commerce para estar seguro que su aplicación está yendo por el paso que necesita. Estamos haciendo lo posible. Uh, yo, yo entiendo sinceramente lo que están pasando, y estamos tratando de hacer, ah, y, y, y de, de tocante las preguntas que le están preguntando. Eh, eh, son la, the, the, um, requirements, um, requisitos que es obligatorio para ellos a preguntar, para estar seguro que cuando nos hacen un audit, uh, no nos van a, a decir que, que, que le dimos el, el, el dinero equivocadamente, okay? Estamos haciendo lo posible. Pásale por aquí, por favor. Le voy a dejar la oportunidad de preguntar algo. She's got one question, one more quick question.
En mi caso, Rolando me pidió documentos. Yo le llevé todos los documentos que me pidieron, firmé la doble un nueve, y supuestamente nada más iban a necesitar las puras pérdidas que habíamos tenido. Yo tuve más de veintiséis mil dólares en pérdidas, en mi negocio, okay? Y yo le llevé todos los documentos, y hasta ahorita no he recibido nada, ni siquiera calificaste, no calificaste nada.
Okay.
In my case, Rolando asked many questions that, uh, I thought were unnecessary. He keeps asking for more documents and more information concerning, that's not, has nothing to do with the application. And, uh, we need to be able to, uh, know why he's asking all these questions. Also, in my case, I lost more than twenty-six thousand dollars, and I, we just don't understand why all these questions and why, uh, we're being pressured to do, uh, to turn in documents that we don't need to.
City manager, Dave Zabel, was there a way that you could, uh, follow up with, uh, Maria? I forgot the name.
Sí, así como yo, hubo muchos negocios que metimos toda la documentación bien, y también la LBA estuvo apoyando a meter las aplicaciones, documentos, todo lo metimos bien, y hasta ahorita no hemos recibido ni respuesta, ni nada.
Uh, according to all the documents that we were asked, we turned in a lot of the documents that they've asked us to turn in. Many, many businesses have done this. The LBA has helped us, uh, turn in a lot of the documents. And to date, we haven't heard if, anything, if our application is in process, if it's been approved. We don't know anything.
A mí, ahorita me dieron una extensión hasta el día once para pagar mi renta, porque yo no saqué dinero para sacar mi renta este mes, y yo no sé qué es lo que voy a hacer.
I've been given an extension to pay my rent, because I have, don't have the money to pay my rent, and I need to know if I'm gonna be helped, because I don't have the money to pay the rent.
Okay, gracias, Dave.
Yep, uh, we can follow up with, uh, the chamber, uh, Director Sigdel and I will, uh, this week, and kind of, uh, look into some of the questions that are being asked and what the status, some of the, uh, applications are, we heard this evening. As you, as you heard earlier, there have been no applications rejected at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to figure out, um, did you, did you get her name by any chance?
Ramírez.
Veronica Ramirez. Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and, is there anybody else? So that we can continue with the meeting. Thank you so much. Um, I, I understand it's difficult. I understand the frustration. I, I hear your, I hear what you're saying. All I can say is I'll do the best I can with the time I got remaining, and I know that the council, if they wanna comment, they can comment. Uh, but, uh, hopefully they do the best they can, and we're gonna work hard to, to try to be better at what we're doing. So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move on, uh, to item number seven, reports from committees or officers. Anybody count, uh, any of the council members having anything they'd like to report?
This is council member Roach, and just wanted to report that last, well, I guess we already reported it. Last Monday, the subcommittee met, um, for the redistricting, uh, input, and we had some conversation with it some apps. Uh, gave some additional input on Friday through, uh, today to staff about the letter, and I think you saw that, Mayor, and the rest of council saw that, uh, in your inbox, uh, what we put together, and so that's what we have.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Roach. Yeah, I did see that, and, uh, I shared my sentiments with, uh, Mr. Zabel. Anybody else? If not, then we'll move on to hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating there too, and there's none listed. And now we go to ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. And nine A, we have a quasi judicial ordinance of Pasco Development, the C one to R three. And before we get started, um, Mr. Ferguson, would you like to, uh...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, so this is a, uh, just a reminder for everybody, this is a quasi judicial hearing, uh, which means that it's a hearing to render a final decision on the materials presented. Uh, it's defined as a, quote, proceeding, uh, in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. Uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects, both form, substance, or in, I should say, three respects, form, substance, and appearance. Uh, and at this time, let's see, so all council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, uh, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceedings which would affect the council members personally. Whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, uh, prior to hearing the facts. D, uh, whether there has been any ex parte contact, that's part, uh, that's contact outside of the formal, uh, hearing process. Uh, contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And E, any conflict, uh, with a council member who believes, uh, would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member, uh, has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And if there's no comment from anybody in the council, I would ask, um...
And then, uh, the finally, sorry, I did, I always, uh, this, this last one trips us up. Uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify council member, uh, or a member of council from participating in this proceeding?
That was for the, uh, the public? If hearing none, then we can proceed?
Yep, we're good.
But that'll ask, uh, Director White to kick it off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The first of the three rezones on the agenda, uh, this particular rezone involves a change from the existing C one commercial retail zoning to R three. It's for seven acres that's near the southeast corner of Argent Road sixty-eight. Uh, the hearing, the Pasco Hearing Examiner conducted a public hearing on September eighth on this matter, and council has been supplied with that, uh, very lengthy packet of information in your agenda report that the Hearing Examiner considered. Uh, the current thinking is to develop the, uh, roughly seven acre parcel with, um, attached single-family homes that share a common wall. It's been a very popular housing project, um, as, as of late. And, uh, there has not been an appeal of the Hearing Examiner's recommendation of approval for this rezone request.
Thank you, Director White. Is there any, um, any questions from council? And would any member of the audience like to comment on this issue? Not here, uh, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion, but Mayor Protem?
Absolutely, Mayor. Sorry, I lost my place in the agenda. Can you just a second?
Absolutely, Mayor, sorry, I lost my place in the agenda, can we just a second? I move to adopt ordinance number four five five three. Res zoning two parcels located near the southeast corner of Road sixteen in Argent Road in Pasco Franklin County, Washington, from C one to R three and further authorized publication by Summery O'Leary.
So there's a motion, there's a motion to adopt ordinance number four five five three, do I hear a second?
Serrano, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye, this is Councilmember Roach.
Okay, that was an aye. All right, so it passes unanimously. Was there, was somebody else missing?
No.
Okay, so yeah, so it passes unanimously. Next, we'll go to an ordinance, uh, Three Rivers Group, C one to R four. Director White.
Well, just, just real quick, Your Honor, we, we need to reintroduce that every time. I don't have to go through the whole script, but I just.
Well, we do for everyone.
I just need to ask if there's any, uh, ex party contact with each particular, uh, uh, ordinance. So this would be, uh, we can, uh, the, the, uh, same, uh, foundation of quasi judicial hearings applies. Uh, if there are any council members that has any concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known about this particular matter.
All right.
Hearing none, are there any members of the public, uh, seeking to disqualify a member of the council participating in this proceeding? Looks like none.
Hearing none. All right. Director White, with your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council again. Uh, this rezone request involves a, uh, a similar, uh, application. The existing zoning is commercial one, C one. The requested change is to R four, which is our high density zoning district. It's a little bit less than a two acre site that's located on the east side of Road ninety-two, about two hundred and fifty feet or three hundred feet north of Sandifer Parkway. Again, uh, council has been supplied with the hearing examiner, uh, packet of information that, uh, he was, uh, considering with the public testimony on September eighth. The examiner has forwarded a recommendation of approval for this, uh, proposed rezone. And the current thinking is to develop the two acre site with approximately fifteen townhouse units.
Thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from, uh, the council?
This is Councilmember Roach and, you know, my comment, uh, would be just that I am struggling with, uh, the string of commercial, uh, properties that are being rezoned to residential. Um, just for the simple basis of, of, we need those commercial properties for, uh, future growth as well and don't wanna lose that tax base, don't wanna lose that, you know, possible potential city income later down the road. Um, and, you know, I, uh, especially close to these major arterials that are, you know, like Sandifer that, that are already, um, were intended years ago to house, uh, businesses. And so, um, you know, if anything, like, I understand that we have a, have a looming population, incoming population of people, um, in the near future. And so we have to make space for them, uh, with housing. And so I get the high residential designation, but I would be more in favor of something where it's commercial on the bottom, residential on the top, or just keeping it commercial. I'm, I'm not in favor of, of rezoning this entirely to residential. So that's where I'm at with this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Would any members or anybody else from the council?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano and I think I can pretty much just echo those comments. Um, you know, we've had these traditionally commercial areas with the intent and the infrastructure that's provided presently really seems to fit that rather than, um, bring in additional, I mean substantial, fifteen residences isn't a lot, but we've seen a handful of these where just, i- it's clear that utilities are gonna have to be considered. Um, a lot of improvements that were made with one intent are probably not gonna be sufficient for another intent. Uh, so I do have some concerns about that.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the council? Is there any, uh, member of the audience that would like to comment on this subject? If not, then we'll, uh, entertain a motion and take it to a vote.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four five five four. Res zoning a parcel located along the east side of Road ninety-two, approximately two hundred and fifty feet north of Sandifer Parkway in Franklin County, Washington, from C one to R four and further authorized publication by Summery O'Leary.
Thank you, so there's a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance number four five five four, do I hear a second?
This Alvarado, I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye, I'm opposed.
Okay, so it's just the Councilwoman Roach?
This is Councilwoman, Woman Ro.
And, and that was a, that was a nay, right?
Should I be saying nay or should I be saying aye? You, you're, you were asking for who was.
Well, if it, if it's a, if it's no, then I would, I would ask to say nay.
Okay, I will say nay then.
Okay, so there was one, one vote, uh, against, and so it passes. Thank you for that. Next, uh, Attorney Ferguson?
Mr. Mayor, if you want, go ahead and just introduce the ordinance, then I'll.
So next, we have our ordinance at Liberty Lake Properties, uh, Blue Dog, RV, C one, the CR. Uh, and it's to adopt ordinance number four five five five, rezoning a parcel located near the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Boulevard and Road one hundred.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, uh, the same foundation for quasi judicial hearings, uh, would still apply in this matter. And if there are any council members, uh, who have any concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Hearing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in this proceeding? Doesn't sound like.
Okay, thank you. Director White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, uh, proposed rezone is from the existing C one retail commercial zoning to CR, commercial regional, which allows, uh, vehicle sales and recreational vehicle sales. As you mentioned, it's near the northwest corner of Broadmore Bou, or Road one hundred and Chapel Hill Boulevard. It's about thirteen and a half acres. And again, the hearing examiner conducted a hearing, a public hearing on this item on September eighth, uh, with the assistance of a very large packet of information that's put together by staff regarding all of the items that go to the hearing examiner. Uh, the examiner has forwarded a recommendation of approval to City Council and no appeal of that has been received.
Thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from staff or, uh, council?
This is Councilman Maloney, I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, um, Mayor Martinez. Um, Director White, but I'm looking at the, uh, so there's a portion where the, where WS DOT has weighed in, um, and it's specifically talking about the potential, um, impact to exits, this exit seven interchange. Um, and recommending that there is a contribu, a contribution from the developer or the property owner uh, to contribute towards the planned improvements of the interchange. Can you speak to me a little bit about what that process looks like? I'd like to understand that better.
I'll, I'll try, although I have to be a little bit vague, uh, council, Councilman Maloney, uh, Washdot. Uh, that's a very typical comment on a rezone request near the interchange by Washdot. Uh, they're putting the applicant and the city on notice that something will be required. Unfortunately, at the rezone stage, we, we're not, we don't have a very good idea what that is. Uh, when a project is submitted for this proposed, uh, or for this parcel of land, uh, they will make specific comments on, uh, what they believe is going to be needed to, uh, adjust the, uh, development pattern with, uh, uh, safety off the off-ramp.
So, Mr. White, that's, if I understand that correctly, so during more of the, uh, deeper into the planning process when we get towards permitting, is that then part of like the traffic analysis and, and the typical corollary to the traffic impact analysis and such that a property would need to do, uh, for development? Is that the sort of timing that we'd be looking at?
Yes, a, a, and/or when they submit, um, a checklist through the State Environmental Policy Act, uh, provisions.
Great, okay, thank you, I appreciate, uh, understand the overall process. Uh, and my comments were not specific to this particular development, but just understand, making sure I understood what that comment meant, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, anyone else? Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this issue? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four five five five. Res zoning a parcel located near the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Boulevard and Road one hundred and Broadmore Boulevard from C one to CR and further authorized publication by Summery O'Leary.
Thank you, uh, so there's a motion to adopt ordinance number four five five five, do I hear a second?
Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney, please. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, say nay, please. It passes unanimously, thank you. Next, we go to item D. And this is a resolution, a professional services agreement with RH two engineering for the design services for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Expansion Phase Two project. And tonight, Mr. Wardley, would you like to, give a presentation tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you and thank you, council members. Uh, this item is to look at the adoption or the, uh, approval of a, uh, a contract with, uh, RH two engineering for, so, West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Expansion. Uh, as Pasco continues to grow, so does the need for more potable water or drinking water. And right now, the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant is nearing its treatment capacity at about six million gallons per day. The Water System Comprehensive Plan identified the need to expand this plant to at least initially double the capacity of that treatment. And so the city went through a process and selected RH two engineering to design the expansion improvements. Uh, as the consultant got underway to look at that, three phases were identified in order to accommodate this expansion. The first phase of the project focuses on the treatment aspect and that project is about ready to go out to bid. This will add a second rack of filters to the water treatment plant to accommodate the first set of filters that are already there. The second phase of the project, which is the subject of this item tonight, is focused on the pumping needs so that we can get the increased treated water out into the water system. And so that's what this one is about. And then finally, the phase three part of the project, which will come at some time in the near future, will be the redundancy part of our water treatment plant to ensure that if certain elements of the treatment plant go down, we have the ability to keep the plant running, to keep water going. So with that, I'd be, uh, happy to answer any questions about this, uh, contract in moving this project forward.
And not to confuse phase three with zone three, correct?
Not to confuse phase three with zone three. Now, this expansion project also ties in with a couple of other projects that council may have heard about from staff before, and that is the Zone Three Water Reservoir Project, which this is, uh, kind of like a sister project to it, and then there's gonna be a Zone Three Waterline Project as well. Um, and so, uh, all of the, all of them work together. We have to treat the water, we have to pump the water into the pipes, we have to have pipes big enough to get it, and we have to have a storage tank to store it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wardley. Any questions or comments from council? If not, we can entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number four zero nine nine, authorizing execution of the professional services agreement by the city manager with RH two engineering incorporated for the design of the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phase Two project.
Thank you, so there's a motion to approve Resolution number four zero nine nine, do I hear a second?
This is Councilman Maloney, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, is seconded by Councilmember Maloney. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay? It passes unanimously, thank you. You wanna move us right along to the Zone Three one, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. Uh, this item is, uh, very similar to the one that I just talked about and this one is for the Zone Three, uh, Transmission Main. And this will help get water from the expanded water treatment plant into our water system so that it can accommodate the growth up in the northwest area of the city. Now, the thing I wanted to point out on this one is that the scope of work, if you looked through it, includes two different design approaches and two different alternatives. And the reason we're doing this is because we have a timeframe in which we're trying to meet in order to provide enough water for some new industrial users that are coming to the city of Pasco. And so, these, since all these three projects are tied together, as I mentioned before, some of them, like the water reservoir project, we're not quite sure yet how the design of that's gonna go. And that depending on the design of that project might change the transmission line project. So in order to not lose any time, we're gonna take two alternate designs and move them forward to the thirty percent design level. By that time, we'll know what the decision will be on the reservoir project. And so then whichever option for the transmission main is the right one, we'll continue to move that one forward to a hundred percent. But by doing it this way, we're not delaying the process and this allows us to still meet our schedule for being able to provide water for the new industrial processors that are coming to Pasco.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Wardley. Any questions or comments from council? If not, we can entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number four one zero zero, authorizing execution of the professional services agreement by the city manager with RH two engineering incorporated for the design of the Transmission Main West Pasco Water Treatment Plant to Zone Three project.
Thank you, uh, so there's a motion to approve Resolution number four one zero zero, do I hear a second?
Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, please? Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, thank you for that, uh, staff and council. We'll go to, uh, item number ten, unfinished business, there's none listed. And we do have two items of new business. Uh, one is, um, gonna go before the other. And tonight, we have a legislative and congressional redistricting draft plan update. And, Mr. Dave Zabel, do you wanna take it out? I don't know if Adam's on the line?
I'm not sure if he is, I think, uh, I'll just go ahead and, okay, uh, make a few introductory comments and add him if he's on and, and Brianna can jump in, but.
Okay.
So every, every ten years or so, uh, federal census occurs and with that, the, uh, Washington State Redistricting Commission's convened and the purpose of their, their, or their charge is to, uh, review and redraw legislative and, and congressional districts, uh, for the state. Uh, council is, we're obviously, we're in the ninth and the sixteenth now. Uh, that could change. There's, uh, the, the commission's put out four different alternative maps. Uh, this council met and discussed this, uh, a couple of months ago and, and there was some desire on the part of the council recognizing both a connection to Walla Walla, but also recognizing, recognizing probably a bigger connection to the tri-cities and the common interests we have with, uh, with the region of three hundred and four thousand folks that we are in our metropolitan area, uh, planning area. So, uh, council's provided input to the redistricting commission, uh, through, uh, Mayor Protem Barajas, uh, as well as council members Maloney and Roach. And, uh, with the, uh, release of the census data and the release of the maps, uh, council reauthorized that subcommittee to meet, uh, recently and we met with, uh, city staff as well as Gordon Thomas Honeywell staff to review the four proposed district maps. Uh, part of that, uh, ob- obviously was to review those maps and, and look at how they could, uh, best, uh, represent, uh, Pasco, but also to draft a letter, uh, to the redistricting commission and prepare that uh, for council consideration. We have some deadlines coming up here very quickly, we're gonna need to provide them some input, um, I believe on the eleventh. And so tonight was our first opportunity after the subcommittee meeting to meet. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over. with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brianna.
Brianna, good evening.
Good evening. Great to see you all virtually. Um, I'm Brianna Murray, Vice President with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs and your contact lobbyist. Um, Dave summarized this very well. I think what I will add is that, um, four maps were proposed. The two House maps, um, so the House Republican and House Democrat maps, um, both put Pasco entirely in the sixteenth Legislative District, and both include a portion of Kennewick also in the sixteenth District. On the other hand, the Senate maps, both the Senate Democrat and Senate Republican maps, uh, have Pasco represented by both the ninth and the sixteenth. Um, there's no overlap, overlap with the other tri-cities, and, uh, generally, uh, the dividing line between the ninth and the sixteenth divides east and west Pasco in just slightly different manners between the two maps, but, but not substantially. So, uh, the letter that has been drafted for your consideration is, uh, directed to the Redistricting Commission. It indicates a preference for the House maps that, uh, have Pasco in the same district as the city of Kennewick. I will note that that would mean you would have only three legislators to turn to rather than two six, like you do today. Um, and, um, that's a potential downside of that representation scenario. Uh, the Redistricting Commission is going to, they're not going to adopt any one of the four maps. What will occur between now and November fifteenth, when a single map needs to get approval from three of the four commissioners, um, is they will be negotiating to try and develop a final map. So, so this isn't a they pick one of four options scenario. This is, there are four proposals put on the table, and those four proposals are the starting point for negotiations. In addition to the letter that you all, um, have for your review, uh, there's also, I would, I would encourage, um, any public that is very interested in this process to look on the Redistricting Commission's website, and there is an opportunity to provide public comment directly on each of the maps. Um, and say either thumbs up or thumbs, thumbs down as to whether or not the map, um, is good for the Pasco community. I'll stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Brianna. Thank you for that report. Council, you have any questions or comments for Brianna?
Uh, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you, Brianna, for all your hard work and, and helping, helping steer us and craft to make sure that we're, we're understanding the implications of the things that we do. That's, uh, obviously critical for us. Um, I, I just want to say that, you know, I, I, I really appreciate working with my fellow council members and, and Brianna and, and, uh, and other city staff on, on, you know, crafting up this, this language. Um, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons to directions we, we, we can take and we, approaches we can make. I think the portion of the letter that I think really speaks to how important this is, is where we talk a little bit about, um, you know, the legal challenges that both the city has faced in the past and the county, and the county is facing today in terms of, um, you know, how it's affecting our Latino community. And I think that that, that implication, you know, will may, may now, of course, play out in the same way for the state legislative redistricting process. I think it's important to understand that, um, you know, when we're looking at this, one of the implications really is it being, you know, we're one Pasco, where we're trying to histor, trying to heal some of those historical divides that, that have minimized the impact and the voice of the Latino community. And, um, I think that's something that the redistricting subcommittee of, of, of our council, you know, certainly spoke to quite a bit. So, um, there's a lot of important aspects that, uh, Brianna has captured in the letter that's in front of us. Um, and, uh, appreciate her, I'll again, appreciate her thought into that, but just want to draw your attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Serrano. Um, I will say that I've actually sent in my own comment that I prefer the two, um, legislative district approach. Quite frankly, because I find that, uh, you know, we have six legislators. You, you mentioned that, Brianna, that dropping down to the sixteenth only, we only have the ability, now, we can obviously contact any legislator we want, House, Senate, regardless of district, but having six legislators assigned to us, I think is proven extremely beneficial. I think it was extremely beneficial in the way things got pulled together for our Lewis Street Overpass project. Obviously, I don't want to minimize, Brianna, what you and your team did, uh, behind the scenes there, but you know, when you have a coalition of six, or in some cases even being able to reach out to the eighth legislative district and get nine legislators sitting on different, um, different committees who are able to pull different issues, um, and, and assist the city, I think it's extremely beneficial. Um, so my preference has been and still remains to be in a two legislative district approach, uh, where we can have the ear directly of six legislators. Um, I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Definitely some pros and cons to, to any decision that's made. Um, I like the, I like the idea that if, uh, we go to one district, there's just more possibility that we can get a rep, some representation from, from Pasco. Um, but doesn't mean you can't get it if you, if you have, uh, split districts, but, uh, anyway, there's pros and cons, it just depends on, uh, but I agree with, with both your comments, both yours, uh, to Councilmembers Serrano and Maloney's, and I trust that, uh, we'll just do the best we can to, to proceed this forward and hopefully get the best results. So, with that, is that all we have for that?
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may just offer one comment of comfort. I've worked with communities in both arrangements, and there's success to be had in, in both arrangements. So, um, so I would just, you know, there's not a lot of control, uh, once we submit this comment period, you know, on October, I think, fifth, and then again on October ninth, the commission is going to accept public comment period. And there's not a lot of control over what happens between now and, and when the final map is released in November. And I would just offer that no matter what happens, I'm confident that we'll be able to work with whomever our legislators are.
Yep. All right, thank you for that, Brianna. Appreciate that.
Mayor, I just wanted to, just to reiterate the, the work of the committee in putting the letter together. It's intended to this go out on behalf of the city council, so part of tonight was just to make sure the council was on board with this letter going out, uh, as drafted. Don't, don't necessarily need it. We, we could do a motion if council wanted, but, uh, I think that would certainly be appropriate.
Okay. Well, with that said, uh, Mayor Protem, would you like to draft up a motion for the acceptance of the letter that was drafted?
Absolutely, Mayor. Uh, let me figure out what we're going to add on there. Mr. Ferguson, any suggestions?
Sure. Uh, yeah, so why don't we, uh, we could do a simple motion to approve the letter as presented?
That works for me. Okay, uh, I move to approve the letter as presented.
So, there's been a motion to approve the letter as presented for the legislative and congressional district, districting. Um, do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Maloney. I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, say nay?
Nay.
One, uh, Councilmember Serrano with a nay. It, so it passes. Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to item twelve, and we have a need for an executive session. Uh, we will, give me one second here. The council will meet in executive session to discuss with legal counsel about current and potential litigations per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I. And we will need approximately fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, uh, in executive session, and then we'll come back out to, um, to come, come back out and, uh, continue the meeting. So, with that, it is eight nineteen, and we will now go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is now eight thirty-five and we're back from executive session. And appreciate your patience with us. This new business is a consideration of C two zoning amendment. And I will go ahead and let our attorney person lead or city council.
I'll make it. So good evening again, Mayor and Council. So we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the C two zone, which encompasses much of our downtown core. And the restrictions in that C two zoning district were established decades ago now. And they've been of growing interest from the city council and from business owners in the downtown core for quite some time. In an effort to engage the public in a comprehensive evaluation of the future downtown, the city authorized the downtown master plan in its twenty twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget for an investment of about a hundred thousand dollars. And while this effort is now well underway, the scope is very extensive. And as a result of the extent of the scope, master plan is really not expected to be completed until May of twenty twenty-two. Or at least considered for for council's consideration until May of twenty twenty-two. Meanwhile, a number of our downtown business owners are feeling some of the restrictions in the C two zone are hampering not only the revitalization of downtown, but the economic recovery of their own businesses as a result of of COVID. And while supportive of the downtown master plan effort, business owners are requesting the council make some minor amendments to the C two zone now that will that will provide additional flexibility in advance of the downtown master planning effort. So over the past few weeks in particular, there's been considerable activity among downtown business owners. We have a number of them in the audience tonight to coordinate on zoning issues and to communicate their concerns to council. This item tonight was added formally to the agenda just today by three council members who separately requested council consider the request from business owners on the minor amendments to the C two zone. So in your packets are a number of attachments, the first three regarding the regarding the C two zoning code, a clean copy of the current code for your reference, a revised version, which was presented by Mr. Grand Boy, a downtown business owner and property owner a week or so ago. And then a marked up version of the Grand Boy proposal by council member Maloney. Additionally, there's a fourth attachment that which was submitted this afternoon. Basically, a petition by representatives of several downtown business owners and and some property owners requesting elimination of several prohibited land uses within the C two zone. Want to note that I did send out by email an updated version of that petition sometime towards the end of the day around five thirty or so that we had received. These exhibits are important as they tend to illustrate should council proceed with the minor amendments passed, that there are differences in what's considered as minor. The differences of opinion, that is. That said, some minor improvements to the C two zoning could provide immediate relief. The challenge being to determine an degree on what minor means. If council determines it's imprudent to if it's, excuse me, if council determines it imprudent to entertain the request to enact minor changes. There's a process outlined in the fifth attachment, which is a September thirtieth memo from Director White to myself. In that alternative, the council may wish to focus the planning commission first on minor amendments to the C two zone as an early phase of the downtown master plan, basically kind of pushing forward that part of the plan. And and with the thought being that with a couple of planning commission meetings, one being a mandatory open record hearing, they'd be able to complete their work early in twenty twenty-two, perhaps February or perhaps a little bit earlier. Another alternative, the council, city council may determine to initiate, to define and act on a series of minor code amendments to provide more immediate relief. And while this approach has some inherent risks, note that the, you know, there's potential impact on the downtown plan. Like, you know, possibility of inconsistencies, impact on the planning commission and their work, council time and focus and space on their upcoming agendas. And the potential for unintended consequences, that probably we can't identify what those would be today. This alternative does have the impact of providing the quickest route for a level of relief sought by the business group that has been engaged on this matter. And regardless of the path selected, though, our our code requires for a transparent and public process for any kind of zoning code amendment. So at this point, I want to turn it over to our city attorney for a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about process by which we'd have to to look at in terms of required notifications and so forth. And then Director White, for any comments he would want to make.
With that, Eric. Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief, keep everybody awake. When we start talking about law, we could get a little drowsy. So the long and short of it is, we do have a couple of ways that we can amend the text of our zoning code. There's three specific ways in title or, excuse me, chapter twenty-five, two-ten, oh-two-oh, and it talks about specifically text, the three ways for how we can do that. The first way is through a city council upon its own motion may conduct an open record hearing to amend the text, or they could send it to the hearing examiner. The planning commission may initiate an open record hearing to develop the recommendation. Or C, any resident or property owner inside the Pasco urban area may petition the city council for a text amendment. A petition to amend the text does not obligate the city council to follow through on the petition amendment. So with that, then depending on if any or any three of those are utilized, then it kind of goes down to the next step in the process. Specifically, under the council portion, whether council makes the on its own motion conducts the open record hearing or sends it to the planning commission. The requirements for open record hearings in our code are pretty specific under notice requirements under twenty-five, two-ten, oh-four-oh, which says, and I'll try to keep it brief, but it says that at least fourteen days notice of time, place, and general purpose of any open record hearing required by this chapter shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city. In addition, there too, written notice of a hearing shall be mailed to each property owner of record within three hundred feet of the boundaries of the area proposed to be changed or altered. Owners of the record shall be determined by title company report or report from Franklin County assessor's office, not more than thirty calendar days preceding the date of publication. Substantial compliance shall be deemed to be full and sufficient compliance. So with that, just makes it clear that there are some pretty specific guidelines that our code requires for either the planning commission or council to move forward. If the public tried to petition council for a change under three, there's specific petition requirements that have to be met in our code under twenty-five, two-ten, oh-three-oh. The petition for change of classification must show the following, the date the existing zone change became effective, the conditions alleged to warrant the can, the additional zoning, facts to justify the change. So there's several, there's there's five or six other things that have to be met there for petitions. So at this point, it sounds like those are the three options that could could be utilized to go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. So with that, Mr. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I I do want to point out that there are some things to consider regarding the public notice. It does require a fourteen day notice period. And the notice would, of course, be to the property owners, the 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 property owners within the C two zoning district. So that's a fairly large mail out. Once that property, that once that list is assembled, then the notice would go out. It would be documented and the fourteen day period would need to be from that date. So it can't be next council meeting or even the council meeting after. It may take until Friday or perhaps Monday to assemble the information on the owners for notification.
That will take into consideration. Ms. Ferguson?
I'm proud of you.
Anything else? Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and allow unless what I want to ask, anybody have any questions from the council? Questions or comments you'd like to ask before I give opportunity for the public to express their concerns?
This is Councilman Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you, staff, for helping outline the the legal requirements in which one. And thank you all for for your patience and for your reading through my handwritten notes. You get a little bit of an insight in how I spend my weekends. So yeah, I'm I'm very much in favor of us of council identifying a set of minor adjustments to the C two zoning, understanding that after we're done with the master planning process, I hope that we are going to see a full a full redo redo. If we had to pick a starting spot, the waterfront or the waterfront development district that was recently approved, I think last year for the area down by Oshri Point may be a more appropriate starting point than than certainly the the current C two zone. And so you can see in the packet where 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 kind of my thought process was, not everything that was proposed, I believe, in in my mind is minor, but I think that there are some really meaningful changes that would be just simply expected in any downtown in, you know, across the country. So so heads up, I've kind of identified in in one council member's eyes what what minor might be. So I intend to make a motion tonight, just as a heads up to to direct staff to move forward. But I very much wanted with incorporating some of these minor changes, and I hope that the the rest of council is able to weigh in on on what they think is minor. So we have solid consensus as to direct staff to move quickly, expeditiously to meet those legal requirements and get changes. So it sounds like if I'm adding up the days, as Mr. White and Mr. Ferguson laid out, we're talking weeks to a month. We're not talking years. We're not talking months. We're not talking next calendar year. So 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 thank you if there's any questions. I guess if I if I had to summarize my 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 comments, it would be I am suggesting that we move a number of items from the prohibited list that I believe are pretty non-controversial in a typical downtown. I don't think they will create a non-conforming use down the road. Move those from prohibited uses over to allowed uses to strike a couple of the permitted accessory units that are, I think, overly specific and replace them with a general, more general one in alignment with our waterfront district as a reference. And maybe make a minor modification to one of the allowed items to, again, match with a waterfront district zone. I believe these will not change the character of downtown in any negative fashion. I don't believe will ultimately something that will be at issue as we go through a master planning effort and get a and get a better public input, a full, more full picture of what of what the implications are to some of these changes. So with that, again, that's how I spent about six hours, eight hours this weekend, spending some of my time working for the city. So I hope that I hope that all makes sense and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. Otherwise, you know, just just, I guess, I want the members of public to know while I'm sitting at sitting at home, working on this for my iPad and not able to attend in person, I hear you. We're working for this. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and appreciate the work you put into it. I I studied what you provided for us very, very much. The only question that I think is still really is is what is minor? And I think there was an issue with the one item where requiring so many hours to be open. And we we don't know where we're going to go on that at this point. But at this point, if council doesn't have any more comments, we'll hear from.
This is Alvarado.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, first, I just want to thank everyone who's there. It is certainly something that impacts your life directly. So, you know, it is eight forty-nine and you're you're here to, you know, be, you know, petitioning your government. So I really want to commend you for that. I do want to also commend my colleague, Mr. Maloney, who's, you know, has initiated a lot of this these conversations, at least with me. But also, I guess, just from from my perspective, is just being able to be able to have some language along whatever we permit or not permit that's more specific. I think the, as written, it really interpretation really is easily lost and easily misconstrued. And so whatever we come up with and, you know, I think whatever is minor definitely have some specifics that people can know what to expect and it's not nebulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Councilman.
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. I appreciate staff and the other council members who have also devoted a lot of time to this. I'm excited that we're actually bringing this in front. I do think it bears repeating that the intent here is, as I understand, a temporary change that could be, or may be, maybe not, sunsetted upon the adoption of a downtown master plan and a future pending more permanent zoning change. Can I get clarity on that? Because I think this is a very important component. The way I've considered this is, we make the changes now, we invest in the plan, and then we adopt a final ordinance after the completion of the plan with further public input. So again, I think it bears worth repeating that these changes may not stand at the end of that process, and the individual owners who are looking at investing in these types of businesses need to be aware of that potential risk.
This is Councilmember Maloney. I just want to make sure I get some clarity on that, because I want to make sure I understand the legal implications of what Councilmember Serrano is saying there. I'm not sure I'm opposed or in favor of, I guess I don't understand implications of a temporary zoning change that would, you know, probably last a year. Perhaps, Mr. Ferguson, could you help me understand what that would look like, or how we would implement that? Again, not in favor or opposed, I'm just not sure I understand.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Maloney. The, that is going to be a really good topic of discussion if council decides to move forward and hold a open record hearing, because there's a lot of technicalities about how you would go through that process, and there are some risks that everybody would want to go in eyes wide open and make sure they were aware of. It's not as simple as being able to say, okay, well, this is temporary, it's only in effect, and then it's gone. There's some pretty significant, both federal and state constitutional requirements that would have to be met to go through that process, and that's certainly a topic that we've learned more about in the last few days than I think I did for the bar exam. But, yeah, it's, we're happy to do everything we can to make sure everybody has all the facts or all the knowledge that we need to go through that decision process.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, I appreciate that. I guess from my perspective, if I was a business owner coming in, and we made a change to allow something that's not currently allowed, I guess I'd expect that it was still last, I guess I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I support the temporary aspect of that, but understand that in a year from now, it's going to change, and so the worst that we could end up with is a non-conforming use that could eventually be lose its grandfathering status and would no longer be permitted to do that, whatever that function is. I believe that the minor items that I've marked up, which, you know, is a subset of the request list, I don't believe any of those are going to be a high risk for not being included in the master plan at the end. So, maybe I'm indifferent of it one way or the other, that sounds really complicated, and I'm not sure I understand all the details, so, that's, I guess, where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. Serrano, especially for your attention, your comments on that.
Oh, no, I appreciate that, I just, I think we need to let folks know that our intent is to hopefully adopt this down the road as is, but those who are going to invest, whether they're prospective or present owners, do proceed with some risk, and they need to be aware of that, that things get, to your point, maybe grandfathering is the appropriate approach, I don't know. But at the same time, if we modify our zoning ordinance, and that doesn't dovetail with what the plan looks like, we just need to be aware, or owners need to be aware that that is a potential kind of cost benefit analysis that needs to be done.
This is Alvarado.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think whatever changes we make, we need to be careful that they're not significant ones that could be highly risky and would necessitate a large amount of investment to make happen from an owner's perspective, and so, but then also, I think there needs to be the commitment of council to say, these are the changes we made, and we're going to fight to keep them, and, you know, we ultimately can make that decision regardless of what, you know, we come up with as a plan. So, I think that that's both a commitment from council, but also not going in and just hacking at everything just for the sake of it, but really be careful, methodical about what it is that we can that could be lasting, and then being able to add from there, at least that's my perspective for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else? Okay, so, at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a public comment, but I'm just going to ask one thing. I think, I think you're all, if I'm not mistaken, most of you are in agreement with where you want to go. I would ask that whatever is presented tonight, that you don't have to repeat it, because we got it, but if you have something new to add, be more, I would invite you to come so that we can make sure we get this right. The last thing we need to do is put both the city in a liability issue, and, again, we're trying hard to make, move this as fast as possible, and it sounds like, you know, we kind of know which way we want to go to get this done as soon as possible, but with that, I'll go ahead and allow the first person to go ahead and come on up.
Mayor Martinez and council members, nobody said it was going to be easy when you were elected, and sometimes you're going to have to pull up your pants and show that you got the guff to do it and make the decisions, and this is, decision needs to be made. We can't continue to kick the can down the road. And I know you went into executive session, and you got your rules that you have to go by, and then they came out and tried to paint a pretty picture to us that this is what's going to happen. We can't have temporary situations. Businesses that wanted to invest downtown Pasco cannot operate under a temporary basis. Either we get rid of C2 and bring in C3 like the rest of the city that has commercial, or we modify C2 to the suggestions of my colleagues back here, and respect what they would like to have done with C2. We didn't say get rid of C2, we said let's make some amendments to C2. Let's make it to where everybody can come and work and put up their business downtown Pasco. Work concern that if C2 is done within five blocks, you guys can change it to the whole city. We have a salon downtown Pasco who started having karaoke during her beauty salon on Friday nights. She got stopped from doing karaoke because it's considered a nightclub. Since when does karaoke become a nightclub? Families at home have night, karaoke. I'm sure you guys have had parties in your home with karaoke. We can't have bull pool tables. Restaurants that have had pool tables can't have them. Our halls downtown, you know, I can't believe that we have an administration that cannot make suggestions on getting rid of this stuff. It had to take a united front of all these business owners to come and ask for a change, and we can't get change because there's a process. We need to make change, and it's not easy to make change. Secondhand stores, we have a business downtown who fixes computers, and he fixes hundreds of them. Then he puts them on the shelf for sale, they say, you can't sell secondhand computers, not in C2. So he's stuck with all these computers, and he can't sell them. Another store wanted to sell used bicycles, you can't have secondhand product. These are stores and businesses that invest in downtowns all across the land, and they operate, and they're successful, and they draw people to the community, and downtown Pasco. And the Latino community are the ones that have been doing this for years. So, it is, it is those business owners cannot invest into downtown because of this C2. Another business, in all this I learned, I'm sure there's a lot of city council members that don't know about all this stuff, but it's involving C2, that's why I'm explaining to them. You can't have a club. Gold's Gym wants to put a downtown because their paid membership is considered a club. We can't have a health and fitness center invest into downtown Pasco. Tattoos. There's a, the beauty salons, all the beauty salons that do women's tattooed eyebrows, they take out their license with the state, pay their money, they get their license and everything, and then Pasco Code Enforcement says you can't tattoo eyebrows. Lost the revenue. And then when they ask for help, they get questioned for everything that they, down to their grandmother's name. We need to make change, and we can't be afraid to do it. It has to be done. Thank you for approving my appointment that there's going to be amendments to the bylaws, to Robert's Rules. Yes, you made amendments to Robert's Rules, but they weren't for the best of the community. You're running business with handcuffs, the city council can't make the decision because their hands are handcuffed because of these amendments to the Robert's Rules of Order. Yes, you can make amendments, but they got to be fair. It has to be a fair process to everyone, not just the city of Pasco. I'm all for supporting the city of Pasco. I'm all for to helping the city of Pasco, but when I see injustice like it is in C2 downtown, I'm going to bat for it, and I'm going to support these business owners. So I hope that we can make change, I hope that we can understand to work together, we can get more things done when we work together than to work against one another, and that's what these downtown business owners have done. They have unified, and they're working together to bring a united front to let you know, we want change, and we don't want change for temporary, we want change for always, we want it now. We came tonight, and we want change now, not next week, not next month. Any city council member can make a motion and a second. Robert's Rules of Order says that you can make a change, you can make a motion, you can make a second. If you don't want to take an up and down vote, then you can have a consensus. Robert's Rules of Order says you can have a consensus. If you don't want to put yourself in a hot water and say, hey, I voted against, or I voted for, okay, don't vote it. Have a consensus to move forward and make changes now, forever. Thank you and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Go ahead, who you want, go ahead, Mr. Granboi.
Thank you, council. My name is Thomas Granboi from Big Maple Properties. As many of you know, we just purchased a, well, in January, my wife and I purchased a dilapidated building in downtown Pasco with the goal of making it more desirable for people to live and work and be entertained in the downtown area. Just a little bit of history about me, I've been on the city code enforcement's board since 2017, and have just become a member of the DPDA board, so I'm really invested in the downtown area, and wanted to experience or express some of our challenges that we, some of our challenges and some of our goals, and the purpose of meeting together here. Councilmember Maloney, I want to really thank you for reading what I submitted, and for sure, your comments hit right on the mark. Some of the things that I mentioned absolutely were meant for a long-term solution for master plan, as well as, as well as the minor adjustments that you, that you made on the note, so I really appreciate that. Some of the challenges that we've had, again, when trying to attract businesses, have been trying to, is that they're constantly being shut down by what they can do or what they can't do in the downtown area. We've had a tasting room, we've spoken with them, that's something that has been, that they found out that they weren't able to do. We've had somebody who wanted to open up a gym in our building, and found out that, yep, that's not something they could do either because of the membership. And refurbished toys, again, that was mentioned as well, that's something I had, another business that I had to turn away. And then all three of those businesses I've seen in other thriving downtown areas, why can't we have those here? And I think that those are easy items, those are sort of no-brainer, easy minor items to move over from one column to the other. Our goals in the downtown area should be to get a diverse amount of, diverse investors involved, with a diverse type of businesses involved. I know that we've made that effort ourselves to reach out to businesses to bring them in, and it's a challenge, because we don't, a lot of businesses don't know what they can do and what they can't do, as well as we want to bring a diverse options for the consumers as well, you know? We want people to be able to come downtown, spend time downtown, and go from store to store rather than just shop for one or two items that our downtown area offers. I fully acknowledge that the master plan is coming a hundred percent, and that's, we're excited about that. I feel like the mass, the minor changes that we're asking would be no brainers to continue into that actual master plan. The other items that Councilmember Maloney marked up, well, I would obviously love to have reviewed for that master plan. But I think the small things could be done immediately so that investors could start the process of trying to find seed money, or trying to find properties, or the bit, or the property owners themselves could try recruiting those types of businesses so that when the master plan is done, and we know the kind of sidewalks we're going to get, the lighting that we're going to get, the signage requirements, that can be, we can start that process, so we can start that process in April when the master plan is completed. And I also want to thank also the city for, we talked about sprinklers earlier, I know that that's something that's been talked on a regular basis, because one of the concerns is, well, that I've heard is that, well, you know, if we allow nightclubs, and all of a sudden, everybody's going to turn their building into a nightclub. Well, the fact of the matter is, is that most, most of our buildings in the downtown area, ours included, wouldn't meet the minimum safety requirements or building requirements. So we appreciate the city council and what they're, and city staff, absolutely city staff, for trying to figure out what they can do to help us to bring buildings up to code so that we can have a more vibrant, diverse downtown. And, yeah, it's, I think that by moving these small steps forward, it helps to give us property owners a reason to invest more money in downtown. I think that that's, that's all we're looking for, is a reason to go out, attract these businesses, and invest on the upgrades that we can do ourselves to help raise all ships in the downtown area. So again, thank you very much, Councilmember Maloney, for your thoughts on that, and everybody else for your consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry, one more thing, one more thing. There was some talk about public comment or sending out notifications. On Friday, Jose Negas and I went and walked downtown from, on Lewis, from Third to Fifth, and then up Fourth, from Lewis to Clark, and we got over thirty-five signatures from local businesses saying that they wanted these amendments as well, without even, they, they signed and agreed without skipping a beat. There wasn't a second thought or anything, they said, of course, we should allow these, we should allow these types of businesses in the downtown area, because, again, they want more foot traffic in the downtown area as well, so, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I don't know if that, I mean, we have that list on record now, right?
Yeah, yeah, that was emailed in.
So, just for reference, make sure Mr. White has it, so maybe that'll help get the information quicker.
You bet. And if council has any questions, I'd love to field them, because we've spent quite a bit of time talking with other business, businesses in the area, I don't know, it's hard without anybody physically here to know.
How do you think I feel? But, no, okay, council, any questions for Mr. Granboi? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
City council staff, my name is Carl Holder, I'm a resident of Richland, downtown Pasco business owner for twenty-five years. And there was a recent article in the Spokesman Review on July the twenty-third, two thousand and one, and it spoke to me personally, and from the article it said, "How do we get to this point where elected officials so routinely disparage and ignore the people they're supposed to represent?" So, city council candidate Fenton expressed, "Until recent events of the last year, I was content. It's impossible for me to sit back, say, and do nothing about the tyranny of Olympia and overreaching fist of Washington DC, which is affecting our city's lives and livelihood. Personally, I don't expect you to have all the answers, but I do not appreciate arrogance and recrimination. The Washington State Constitution proclaims all political power is inherent in the people, and the government derived their just powers from the consent of the governed. This evening, I am thrilled to be standing here, presenting to the Pasco City Council. And last week, there was an update on the master plan that was provided by city staff. This week, an agenda item..." This week, an agenda item, request for consideration of C two zoning amendment. Thank you, thank you very much for your consideration. So why C two? Well, in nineteen seventy, they say in the purpose, it's in order to preserve the public health, self, safety and welfare in the central business district and to protect public and private investment. The prohibited uses, it says, evidence received by planning commission, Pasco police crime reports demonstrate that certain uses make central business less desirable. For reasons following, these businesses inhibit new business growth, contribute to business loss, decline of property values, inhibit access, perpetuate a public, public image, which is undesirable or unattractive and detrimental to the public and private investment in revitalization efforts and therefore are prohibited in the C two district. And there's a list of thirteen items. That is what we're addressing today. And this text is offensive to me. While it's noted that uh, the businesses coming to downtown Pasco may not read this, but the city code, the city, uh, staff does read this. So action is needed now. And, uh, as we heard from, uh, Councilman Maloney, apparently there's a request for a motion of the city council and we'll respect, respectfully request that we, uh, receive this for motion today. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Negus.
Thank you very much. Hello, city council, mayor, staff. Thank you so much. Um, I'm here, uh, business owner, uh, one oh-two South Third Avenue, hydrotonics, as well as a volunteer on the board of the D P D A. You know, serving on the D P D A, you know, has been, you know, it's, it's been really, um, a cool experience for me. Served on numerous boards across the state. And, you know, this one was interesting because it presented challenges that actually were, were challenges that could be met and, um, could be conquered. One of the goals and values that I come with is diversity. Anybody who knows me is that is my brand. I bring everywhere I go, it's about as many people as possible from all walks of life to get together and do something. So as you saw the speakers on this zoning, they all come from different backgrounds. This is your community, city council. You know, they come from all walks of life, political, right, left. But we all come together on these issues. Because these issues have handcuffed investment and creativity in entrepreneurship. So with that, I'm so glad that there is a motion, um, from council Maloney. And I hope that you all, uh, can vote favorable to diversifying the downtown. Get rid of these codes. Give creativity, ingenuity to entrepreneurs. And that's all I ask. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Morales.
Hi, uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, first of all, I never told you I was gonna come. I've been patient for two years and the only thing I got from the city of Pasco is this is a long process. There's a lot of legal stuff going through. Um, I ask you point blank, is thirty-four years enough? This ten has been on the book for thirty-four years. Is that a long process already or we need another twenty years? That's all I need to say. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you again for this opportunity, council. Um, I got to know quite a number of these business owners just over two years ago when the city had two community listening forums where they wanted to hear the concerns of the citizens of the city. And at one of those listening forums, I sat and, uh, took careful notes and there was about eighteen people that spoke that night. And of those eighteen people that spoke, as I summarized and shared with you after that meeting, everybody said about the same thing. And what they said was, my city is not listening to me. My city is not serving me. I got invited on last week to sit down with these business owners, a number of them, and, uh, as I sat there and listened to them, some of them literally struggling for the life of their business. And, uh, what I heard as I listened carefully was that the biggest obstacle they had in front of them was the city of Pasco to the success of their business. That really hurts me. I, I tell people that this is my town because I'm proud of this town. I'm proud of what Pasco is. I've watched it grow for thirty-five years is the time that I can remember. And two years ago at those listening forums, the city promised to work on it. And tonight, I can't tell you that there's anything that I know of or that I can tell that the city of Pasco has done to help the businesses of the C two zoning district. I've heard a, a countless number of excuses of why we can't do anything. And, uh, I really wonder, you members of council, who do you represent? I've heard from a number of you that you're not here in the room tonight because you were asked not to be here. Who, who asked you not to be here? How can you represent me? Or how can you represent these business owners? How can you represent the citizens if you don't show up in this room? I don't understand. I think you need to be here in the room. I think you need to look your constituents in the eye. And I think that you need to represent. And thank you, Mr. Maloney, for your promise to bring a resolution before us tonight or before the council tonight. And, uh, please, um, for my friends that actually have businesses in the downtown that I like to go to and for the citizens and for the health of the downtown, take action and do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Sexton. I'm, uh, J M S Construction and Development. I'm also the developer at Osprey Point in the waterfront district. The codes that we're asking you guys to take a look at today are the same codes that we asked you to look at at the waterfront district. And it's the same codes that are being used in the, in other C two, C and C three codes or C one and two codes. So we're not trying to get you to change the whole envelope, right? We're not trying to get you to go outside the box. We're trying to get you to use the codes that are already in place in other areas and just remove the codes that are, are stopping these businesses, just like we did at the waterfront district and, and we've done it time and time again. The responsibility of the city in my eyes is to review those, make sure there are no conflicts of interest and make sure that our permitting process, when those businesses come in place, are inside of those code district areas. So if we can just look inside of that legally, right? And take the motion side of that, out of it, some of these things that were put in there, were put in there at the time when we were having huge problems in the downtown area. I'm, I'm fifty-four years old. I've been here all my life. I remember those problems, right? I'm glad that we put those in place, but it's at that time now that we need to remove some of those codes to match some of our other code issues, some of our code other districts that we have, like the waterfront and C one, right? And that will take away those, those little issues that are stopping some of these businesses to do those little things. I have no downtown business at all down there, but I am a very big supporter of it. So thank you for your time. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Okay. So council, um, we heard, uh, the, the public speak and, um, why don't we move to the next step forward if we want to entertain a motion?
It's Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. I'd like to make a motion. I move to convince a ci- uh, council initiated text amendment for the, for minor amendments to the C two zoning code and direct city staff to facilitate the pro- process expeditiously.
Okay, so there's a motion to
I second.
Is this Mayor Pro Tembraches?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's been a motion and seconded by Mayor Pro Tembraches to, um, expeditionally move on making the changes to the C two zone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay, please. So passes unanimously. So we can, uh, expect, uh, staff to move on that? Mr. City Manager Dave Zabel?
Yeah, just to, Mayor, thank you. Just to set some expectations, we talked a little bit about, uh, what all was involved to start that fourteen day clock and that notification. So yeah, just, so we will, this week we'll start on assembling a list of all the property owners within the district as well as the three hundred foot, uh, requirement in our code outside the district to notify all those property owners as well around the district. So it'd be the basically the perimeter of the C two district. You know, so that'll be a pretty considerable list with, we definitely can get that information right off the assessor's website. Uh, we'll have to prepare a mailer and get that all ready. So that's gonna take a few days. Uh, from there, uh, we also need to do obviously, uh, um, uh, publication in the, the city's newspaper record. Uh, and, uh, all that needs to occur before your, fourteen days before your open record hearing. So we have, we have a little bit of work to do, but, uh, probably within less than a month, three weeks or so, we'll be back here to, to have an open record hearing. So.
Okay. All right.
Mayor Martinez, may I ask a quick question of, of City Mayor Zabel?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zabel, um, so the public hearing is the, will be the next step in front of council. Um, will we be able to, after, immediately after that public, um, hearing, assuming there is no need to change any process at that point, will we, will we have a draft of changes to make such that if we, public comment does not provide us any substantive changes, we can make it then and there at that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Maloney. Uh, we were looking at that, uh, earlier today and trying to kind of outline what those steps would be because this is obviously not, uh, the normal process for how, uh, the, the text in the zoning code gets amended. But, uh, there's not anything that would stop, uh, council from moving forward at that time, at that particular meeting, uh, if they, uh, felt, uh, that they had those changes made. One of the things I think what, uh, I would propose is that our office could, uh, work with, uh, Mr. White and obviously, uh, Mr. Zabel and, and make sure that we are putting together what we think is, uh, pretty close to the center of the dartboard. And then if we need to make any changes on the fly, we can certainly do those uh, by amendment at that time. Uh, so that we could bring something back at that time where, uh, council could actually take action. Uh, and then obviously five days later, uh, anything that's passed, uh, ordinance that gets passed is effective five days later. So, um, that's what, uh, my suggestion would be. Uh, if council wants to, uh, hold the open record hearing and then, uh, give us, uh, marching orders to come back with a, uh, specific ordinance, you can certainly do that. Uh, but my recommendation at this point, obviously with the, the time constraints that have been expressed by everyone, uh, it would be to come with, uh, some kind of, uh, draft that's, uh, as close as we, we think, uh, we'd get the job done.
Yeah, I, I would just note that, uh, you know, there, there is a possibility of, you know, we have, we have, definitely have a very engaged group. Uh, and it sounds like they've been doing a great job of trying to get out there, talk to all the business owners. So, uh, opening up the entire C dis- two district, all the property owners' input as well as all the property owners on a three hundred foot perimeter around the C two district is probably gonna generate a little bit more, I, I would assume maybe more input that isn't quite as coordinated as what we've heard. So you might hear some differing opinions. So understanding that when we walk into the closed record hearing, we can have something put together, but it council may hear things at that hearing that, that, uh, you may want to react to. So.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate that extra thought, um, Mr. Zabel and Mr. Ferguson. Um, and so I guess with that, I would encourage that if there's any, that, um, as we move along this process, if we can be as transparent about what, what draft of changes to C, the C two zoning are available, um, such that anyone who's interested in making comments can make it as early as possible so that we don't end up in this, so we can pass this as quickly as possible. I guess I would encourage the community that's listening and being very engaged on this topic. Um, keep that in mind is that if we can, if we can, um, move forward without any major substantive changes at that meeting, then we will be able to move forward on this much quicker. So thank you all for your, your attention and patience on this. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mayor Martinez.
Thank you. Just make it brief, please, but, uh, Mr. Cortinas, go ahead.
Mayor, I, excuse me, I forgot to mention that the Latin Business Association Board of Directors took action also and we sent a letter to you, uh, to the entire city council and staff that we endorsed the, uh, proposal by Mr. Thomas and also the list of our eighty-eight members that, uh, support the, 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 the motion. And so, yes, the business owners are well-known, know what's going on and what's happening and where we stand on this. And, uh, we appreciate the motion and the vote by the city council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinas. I've just been, uh, made aware. Is there somebody online that, that wanted to share something? Just want to make sure we got people online who covered. There's a I, I see blank there. Okay. So with that, thank you very much. Residents from the downtown and people who, uh, are involved, that, you know, we're doing the best we can and, um, it's been a rough one. But, uh, see if we can get it going. Do you have somebody online and just check?
I do believe you, you have, uh, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Peralis, are you there?
No, Peralis is here.
Oh.
Oh, Leo Peralis.
Yes.
Oh, I was confusing Leo Peralis with Morales. So Leo, are you on the line?
There. Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you go. We can hear you now. Go ahead, Mr. Peralis.
Yeah, I've been waiting here all night. Uh, appreciate it though. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, I was just gonna relay what a lot of people said. Um, a lot of people said it really well. Um, you know, as a person, uh, who supports downtown, I think, uh, this is a very, um, I mean, this, 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 this all makes sense. And I think like, uh, like Councilmember Mayor Maloney said, I think we need to do this ex- um, expeditiously. I would like to see it done tonight. And, um, just for the sake of the matter and just make sure that the L B A and other, uh, downtown businesses, um, are heard. I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Cortinas. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, with that, uh, appreciate everybody's, uh, involvement here and we'll go to, let's see. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a miscellaneous discussion. Did we cover that, City Manager Dave Zabel?
I, I did have a couple of items.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so one, uh, we, we do have a Lewis, uh, street corridor improvement, um, project open house, uh, this week on the sixth. The team has been out talking to a lot of the business, a lot of business owners and, uh, trying to get the word out, but, uh, want to take another opportunity. It's between two and five, excuse me, excuse me, between, uh, at seven P M. on October sixth, right here in the city council chamber. So I, I would encourage and I, I wish I could have still had a full house. We lost a few of them, but, uh, you know, we'd love to have our folks downtown to come here, tell us, see, see the, uh, charrette and, uh, make their comments and tell us what they think. So.
Let's see. Go ahead.
Secondly, uh, you know, council, you passed a resolution tonight naming, uh, Palomino Park, Palomino Park. There's a tree planting, uh, this next Saturday on the ninth. Uh, an Arbor Day tree planting there at our new park at fifty-eight oh-one Chapel Hill. And then, uh, business assistance, we already uh, were able to handle. And then I, I did mention, uh, a while back that we were uh, working on planning, uh, open house for Fire Station eighty-four and I don't have a date for you yet. And of interest to council, it's because of the supply on furniture. Uh, you know, it's one of these victims of COVID type thing. And so we just are not ready to fully move into that. So once we, once we nail that down, it's probably gonna be in November at this point or very late October. Uh, we'll let council know, but, uh, it's interesting how the country is being impacted by supply chain uh, impacts of the, of the pandemic. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And I just, uh, confirmed it is seven o'clock on the sixth for that open house. So thank you so much for that. Uh, City Manager Dave Zabel. And with that, it is, uh, nine thirty. Thank you, council. Thank you, public, uh, community members for your participation and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.